Second, 2023, 3:00 PM. Invocation will be given by Councilmember Cornell and then followed by our first item agenda. Anybody wishing to join us for prayer can do so by standing up voluntarily. Councilman?
Heavenly Father, I just ask for your blessings on Odessa. I ask this evening, this afternoon, as we gather together, for guidance and your touch of the hand on every council member. I just ask for your blessings for the city and your guidance, and I pray in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Ghost.
Thank you. You may be seated. First item, number three, Aqua Texas, Troy Hill, will be giving a presentation. Everybody sit back, we're gonna be here for a little while.
Real quick, Mayor, I'm sorry, Troy, can you take a quick break and just say a prayer real fast for the situation going on at Permian? I know the police are there and they're in control of it, but I just wanna just, you know, it's always a good thing to lift up that kind of situation in prayer.
Troy, do you mind real quick? So basically, we're at now, we gotta call threat for a bomb threat at Permian, that's an ongoing situation as of right now, so hopefully we'll be able to, nothing will come out of it. Mark, you wanna lead us real quick?
Yes. Father God, we come before you, it's right now, Lord Jesus, and we just lifted up the situation going on at Permian High School. Lord, we just ask that, Father God, your holy presence will be there, Lord Jesus, and that they would just be with all the law enforcement officers who are out there performing their duties. Lord, we thank you, Father God, that we have officers out there who are willing to rest their lives, Father God, for any kind of threat that goes out there, Lord, and we just pray for their safety, Lord, and for the safety of our children who are out there right now. Just pray that, Father God, you may just be able to resolve this situation quickly, Lord Jesus, and that everything would just be injury-free, Lord, and that this would just be another hoax. We just give this all up into your name, Lord, Father God, and this has to you just take care of it. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Hill?
Just grab it from the end, there you go.
Hey, everybody, hear me okay?
Is it on? That little red light on? Lucky, you're just breaking everything, Troy.
Man, I'd make a horrible preacher, wouldn't I?
We do have it in the budget, too, we are gonna be working on it.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for showing us, that way everybody can say that it's definitely...
I'll show you what not to do, how about that? All right, well, I do appreciate the council's time today. When we last visited, back in February, we, you gave us permission to do an analysis of the current conditions at the sewer plant, and take a look at the sewer system and come back to you and report. So that's what we intend to do today. I'm Troy Hill, I'm Business Development Director for the State of Texas for Aqua. I have my boss, Craig Blanchett, who is our state president. Craig's a former city manager, has extensive experience running water plants and sewer plants. We also have Cameron Alden, who is our state engineer. Cameron also has worked for two different cities as city engineer and has a ton of experience in this industry, so I appreciate everybody's time again. I'm just gonna run through our qualifications real quick. So our company was founded in 1886 as a water company out of Pennsylvania. We are still based in Pennsylvania today. Our company bought a gas company a year ago, so we did split off, and the parent company is now Essential Utilities, so we own a gas company. But Aqua itself, the division we're in, only does water and wastewater. We're currently the second-largest investor-owned utility in the country today. We service about eight states, including Texas, and we have revenues over a billion dollars, about a billion five, and with a market cap of almost $13 billion. Why is that important to you? Well, we have money to spend when we need to spend it, which is great. Next slide. We work for Aqua Texas, which is, everything's kind of a separate division in and of itself, of which Craig is the president. This gives you a little idea of our footprint. We bought systems to get into Texas, so we bought existing utilities that were owned by another company. Some are good, some are bad, but the goal is the same, and that is to bring the bad ones up to speed where they need to be, and to maintain and operate the good ones and even improve on that. And that's what we're doing currently. So 53 Texas counties today, over 280,000 customers today, mostly in the major areas now. We are looking at West Texas, obviously, as a source of our growth in the future, so we would like to establish a hub out here. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add on that?
No, we'd really like to partner with Odessa and bring our operations expertise here to...
Awesome. Next slide. So, you know, we get questions all the times, well, how do you compare to cities, right? So one of the ways that we do surveys, J.D. Power does one, now this was a residential customer satisfaction study. So this is in the Midwest, but it is some of our larger systems that would equate to what you guys have here. So we're compared to cities like Minneapolis, Toledo, Kansas City, Milwaukee, Omaha. We finished first, second year in a row in customer satisfaction. In Texas, we just worked our way up from fourth to second last year, so we were making big strides here. Again, in Texas, we're relatively new here, but some of the systems just taking a little bit longer to get up to speed, but that'll happen. So, how does a large company really benefit a city like Odessa? Well, I can point to some of the storms that we've had in the last few years, right? The ice storm Yuri, which obviously affected towns across the state, right? My town, of which I was mayor at the time, was kind of on its own, right? We had to handle our own thing. But what Aqua was able to do during that storm was bring resources from other states, so we were able to bring our systems online very, very quickly compared to how, for instance, my city did. We were without water for a week, without gas for a week. I personally was in nine-degree weather all week, so it wasn't fun. But how it relates to you is, look, we don't want those disasters, obviously, but if we do have them, you know, you can trust that we're gonna be able to channel resources from all over the state and all over the country to Odessa to help out.
We have a significant operations in the Houston market, of which there's hurricanes, right? Generators, equipment, all that emergency action plan, not just in Texas, but as Troy mentioned, all across America. And, you know, employees from all across the country have come here for natural disasters and incidents, and we've sent employees from here. I just personally sent employees to Pennsylvania for a hurricane to help get a big water plant up and running before, too. So we have that ability to move folks around in an emergency to provide the service that we need for our customers, no matter where they're at.
So, next slide. Capital investment, very, very important, especially to you guys here. We have money and we spend it on our systems, and we want to invest in our systems because we can address the growth. We want new customers, quite frankly, we want cities that are growing. We wanna be a part of that growth and partner with our cities so that they can meet their growth objectives. At the same time, we're gonna spend money on our existing systems as well as the systems that are needed in the future, right? This is kind of our current spend. You can see we've upped that every single year, we go back to 2017 here, but we do have the money to spend, we do have the capital to spend, and we can react fast. I'm gonna give you a great example. We just took over a system in Dallas-Fort Worth, it's in Rockwall County. It's a water supply corporation. So this company was literally, their whole operator, they had a contract operator, they walked off the job one day. So talk about high and dry. They supplied 2,600 customers. Within days of us making an agreement, what we were gonna do as far as operation and maintenance, we had our operator onsite, we have a very limited supply of water, we are balancing the water supply that they have currently today to meet today's drought needs, and able to juggle that so that they have not run out of water, which they have done previously in the past. We've also gone in, in less than two weeks, we put a automatic switch on the third pump that used to have to have somebody push the on button in the middle of the night, now it's automatically done. We did that within two weeks of owning the system. We've got new meters on order, we're reconstructing a billing system because the old operators give us nothing, and that'll be done in 30 days, less than 30 days from when we started. So, look, we react fast, we do what's needed as it needs to be done. We have national contracts that we can fall back on for things like, you know, service-type situations, but that's one of the things I wanna emphasize with this screen, is just how quickly we can react. We don't have to go through an RFP process. Next string, capital investment. This is a couple of systems that we've done in other states where we did almost a complete rehab, which is obviously going to come up tonight. Next slide. And then we get into environmental. Well, let me tell you, the EPA just gave some new guidelines for what we have to test in relation to PFOS. I mentioned it my first time here, in fact, it was just on the radar screen, since then the EPA actually came out with the guidelines. Now, we may be years away, but it's something that's probably going to happen. To what extent is yet to be determined. But PFOS is forever chemicals, so it is Teflon, they were used in firefighter materials, fire retardants, so you see a lot of these around, a lot of it concentrated in areas around military bases, so it's here, it's arrived. Aqua has been testing for this the last few years, we are one of the few companies that has the facilities that can test down to the levels which the EPA was requiring. Anything you wanna add?
Well, I think it's just a quality matter, right? We all understand regulations are any more strict, it's happening on the water side, it's happening on the wastewater side, we just wanna make sure that everyone here knows that we're here to meet that expectation and even exceed it. And we've been, in this case here, with PFOS, it makes national news now, but it wasn't making national news two, three years ago, we were investing millions of dollar clients to help treat it, right? And that's the same commitment that we will bring to the folks at Odessa, right? Ensure that we're ahead of the regulatory standard instead of reacting to it later. This will be crippling for many communities in the country that have this PFOS in their water, and also eventually in their wastewater. So just an example of an area where we've been very proactive.
All right, next screen. Aqua has currently done almost 400 of these type deals with other cities, other municipalities. When we do this, we become part of the community, we're joined at the hip, and as part of that, we believe that we should invest in the community. We're talking about $4.6 million in community giving in 2021. This is an ongoing thing, so the communities that we partner with, we want to share in their successes across the board, whether that's through local schools or, you know, the Chamber, some other community-type organizations. Next screen. So why does this partnership make sense? Why does a public-private partnership make sense for Odessa? Well, number one, our core business is operating water and wastewater utilities, that is all we do. We wake up every day thinking about it. Number two, we're a community partner with substantial investment in the region, and that is exactly what we would be in this situation. Number three, Aqua always offers all employees jobs as part of any acquisition. Any employees that wanna come over, we feel like we've got a compelling reason why they'd wanna take a hard look at it, whether it's compensation or benefits, we take care of our people, I can assure you of that. So our turnover tends to be quite low. We pay very well, that's the end result. Number four, corporate giving and volunteer programs, I touched on that, and then proven customer service, including emergency response and operation teams. So, I wanna go next to what we found here. So, we were here February 28th, you guys gave us unanimous approval to do due diligence. As a result, we did onsite inspections of the system with our operations team, with Mr. Alden and our VP of Operations. As a result of that visit, we hired an outside consultant, this is Jerry Hartman of Hartman Consulting. He is nationally known in this industry, he is a PUC appraiser for the state of Texas. So Jerry came in and we were able to do another onsite inspection with Jerry, and Jerry gave us a report based on what he felt that the system needed, what he felt that the system was worth, and that's kind of brought us to where we're at today. So currently, there are no TCQ violations, but we believe that conditions exist for multiple issues. There is major capital expense needed within the first five years in order to bring the wastewater plant into operational form, with almost a complete plant rebuild needed. We gave your five-year CapEx plan, which I believe is going with Horn, put that number close to 287, for a variety of reasons, so that's your... Currently, the plant does make reused water, which is an important part of our answer to droughts. For Pioneer Resources, an oil and gas company, the revenue so far has been about $11.8 million per year with expenses of $9.5 million against that $11.8. If agreement is done, Aqua would include an asset purchase agreement, with an agreement with the city to retain this revenue stream without the expenses. So that would be an ongoing revenue stream that, over 10 years, based on historical usage, would be about $120 million. That number is set to go up, I believe, in the future, except this time there would be no expenses against it. So at this time, I'm gonna let Cameron kind of go through the condition of the plant, and again, this is...
I'm sorry, I just have one question, Troy, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Nine point, you're saying $9.5 million in expenses associated with the Pioneer money?
Those are expenses directly counted against the $11.8 million in revenue on your last budget.
Pioneer?
Yes.
I'm not sure I understand that.
Is all that money being spent at the Bob Derrington plant, or is it being just spent throughout this?
Tom may...
Quite honestly, we could not tell from the information that we got exactly where that was going for.
I'm sorry, I should've asked that question earlier, but I didn't.
That, I'm sorry, that $9.5 million is a one-time expense, basically? So that was the initial pump stations that were built up on the raw water pump station and pump enhancements that we did at the wastewater plant?
So it's not ongoing?
It's not an annual expense, so...
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna let Cameron go through the Derrington plant.
Thank you, Cameron Alden, I'm the Engineering Manager with Aqua Texas. I appreciate being able to come and talk to you today, Mayor and council members. As you guys probably know about your Derrington plant, I'm sure that you guys probably seen and heard this more than I need to recite it back to you, but you've got a nice orbital plant out there, it's got two trains on it, it's constructed to treat 12.7 million gallons a day, you're allowed to discharge 11 million of that. Say, as Troy had mentioned, back in 2019, Kenley Horn commissioned a master plan. One of the things, wanna kind of note is that that master plan more looked at growth and being able to address that growth in the future than necessarily it was on your routine maintenance and upkeep of your system. In going out and taking a look at the plant, the Derrington plant is in, need us a major rehabilitation there. One of the key elements to it, which we find very interesting and also a program that we're continuing to expand more ourselves on the wastewater side, is that reuse element, being able to beneficially reuse the wastewater versus just discharging out into the environment, into creeks and streams, put it back in there so that folks are not using your potable water or potable water sources in order to use it for other uses, for example, irrigation or in Pioneer's case, in their operations there. They would need to have, you know, water from other sources to make it. And so that's a very key element that Aqua's very aware of and continues to expand, and is definitely, as I said, would be very happy to have it staying associated with your plant and that project here as well. What you're looking at is some of the challenges that are out there in the operation collection system, and this is one of your lift stations there. One of the things that we looked at is trying to get addressed some of the issues that are out in the plant, or out in the field. Obviously, not everyone looks like this, hopefully this was a one-time occurrence out in the system, but what Aqua would look to do is to continue looking at trying to address INI, the physical condition of your system, do evaluations of that every year, and also look at having a repair and replacement rehab projects every year. You're talking multimillion-dollar reinvestment into that collection system.
What are we looking at, what are we looking at here? I don't, I'm sorry.
I believe that's oil there.
Oh.
That probably had the...
Can we capture that and resell it?
Yeah. Yeah, we kid about...
We found a new revenue stream.
Yeah, we kid about putting an old Eric out there and, you know, double-dipping on this, but no, I say, this is just, I say, all systems have issues there, and again, hopefully this was a one-time occurrence that would not be there, but we'd have an ongoing program to try and investigate and make sure that something like this would not repeat. Some of the things that we would try and also look at address out there at the plant is that there's some safety concerns out there that Aqua would have itself, we would want to go in there and make some improvements in the railing, some of the protections there. For Aqua, we've got our own state specialist for safety, that his sole responsibility is make sure to implement safety programs across the state, and also to go out to visit facilities to try and get any safety conditions out there addressed. What we're looking at here is, this is the main junction box coming into the plant, and then the big pipes coming out there, that's the pipes that lead to your influence into the tank, into the wastewater plant. Part of what we would look at doing with our improvements as well would be to increase our SCADA and the optimization of the plant. This would be able to add instruments and flow monitors, things like that, out in the field as well as at the plant itself, so our operators would be able to get more and better information quicker as to what's going on with the plant, what flows are there, so we can react quicker and be able to get the appropriate measures in place, should there be a surge, should there be anything happening in the plant that would need to be tweaked for best operations. Is it, this is kind of a sign of some of the condition issues that are out at the plant there. You can see you've got, you know, these concrete divider walls between the basins in that train. As you can see, that there's quite a bit of rebar exposed and showing there. Say, some of these walls, six, eight inches at the most, I think some of them are even four inches. Typically, you wanna have one and a half to two and a half inches of concrete on the outside of all your rebar to keep it from corroding and busting the concrete off like you see there. That's a good chunk of what Aqua would look at trying to come in and do immediately there is try and get a full condition assessment of that plant and look at trying to create rehab there so that, you know, if you put this off, you know, it's hard to see just how long something like that would last, but last thing you'd wanna do is to find half that wall and bob in your basement, and you're trying to operate flow while everything's just one big mixer out there.
What's the, what's the depth of that, those, I mean, this is, we can see this, but what about the underneath conditions?
That's one of the things, we can't tell you what looks like underneath there.
It's a mystery.
That's one of the challenges that they have at the plant now, is that the flows are just enough that they're not able to take one of the basins down to do major rehab, is what we were told, and so they can't take either of the trains down to see what's below the surface of that.
Oxidation digits are generally about 10 to 15 feet deep, generally, right?
Yeah.
But it could go up your platform all the way down.
This is one of the screw pumps there, just kind of have it shown there, I don't know if you can see some of the issues there, picture's a little far away, but again, you've got some rebar, you know, too close to the surface there, a lot of scaling off. If you zoomed in on the steps on that left-hand side, you'll see that there's a lot of raveling of the concrete going on there, and so you can have someone step on that and slip and fall there, so looking at addressing that. It's hard to see on the far side, there's also a railing missing around that far side of that platform as well. This is just one of the signs that, things that we try and look at addressing right away.
Going back to the, to the slide, oh, two slides back, slide seven to that one, I'm assuming to do the repairs on that, we'd have to drain that. How long would the system be down, or would it be down, would it be shut down for any time during the rehab process, or?
That's one of the things that we would further evaluate as we looked at, how would we do that rehab? If Aqua were to acquire the system, that's one of the things, in operating it, we try and look at, how can we best manage that facility to be able to take one of those basins down? What we've done in the other systems is to bring in a temporary plant to help handle some of that flow while we take part of the plant off, or in some cases, while we completely rebuilt the plant, obviously, something a little bit smaller than this, but we've gone in there and put in a temporary plant to handle the entire flow while we replace something if we had a very limited site or other conditions.
It's a challenge to do a...
Yeah, sounds like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, that didn't escape us when we were out there looking at it, and it's a good question.
Yeah, you're not putting me in scuba gear down there, that's for sure. This is just kind of some of the aesthetics that you see across the planet there, we'd wanna try and have a little more proactive corrosion prevention, again, across there, this is just, this one actually looks a lot worse than what it is, but it's just something that very visually, if you walked up to it, you'd begin to, you know, question the rest of the plant. Kind of through this in there, this is some of your ingenuity done by some of the staff there, you can kind of see they've had to put its own chain and hook in order to keep this door fairly well closed. This is on the backside of your mechanical screens at the front of the plant.
So what are we looking at? You're saying it's a door, what's it do, what's its function?
On the front side of that is the mechanical screen, basically, when you get flowing to the plant, you've got stuff floating in it that you don't wanna have in there, you know, be it trash, debris, you know?
Rags?
Yeah.
Anything that's flowing down through, that's going down through the system.
Right. So that's supposed to take the biggest part of it out, and below there, you can see where it dumps out onto a conveyor belt there, but this is just kind of the, some of the conditions that we're gonna be putting...
So what we're seeing then below is the screening process, right?
Correct.
And then, and then that's mitigated, that becomes the sludge part?
No, that's trash that gets hauled off.
And so what are we looking at here, what's being held, so basically is the top is what, and with the chains being holded from it collapsing?
Yeah, it's, it's keeping that protective screen in place there.
Was this a system that when, I think, the plant's 1983, 82, 83? Was this the method that replaced, I mean, with, this was a new system back in those days, wasn't it?
I don't know the exact date that this particular piece was put in place, no.
Okay.
This is, I'd say, just another condition shot there, you can see that the original bolts that were holding that in place had sheared off, and so now they've got a strap over the top trying to keep that in place and in use.
So what is it holding in place?
That's actually a valve stem that goes down, this is on your screw pump that you saw earlier, and basically, that goes all the way down and it'll operate a valve for influence coming in and out, or into the screw pump there, and that's kept in place, you can sit there and torque and screw down and close that valve.
Manually?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I actually went on this tour, I normally don't do that, as president of the company, I normally don't do the due diligence and the other things, but I did, considering the size and scope of what we're talking about here, and Mr. Hartman, as well as these gentlemen here, and the staff was wonderful, they took us everywhere, and they showed us the things that needed improvement, things they've done to improve, right? They're a good bunch of folks, and I enjoyed spending time with them. But this is a good indicator of some of the concerns that we have about the quality, quality, quality of the concrete, right? Is if you can't anchor in anymore in the original spots, you have to kind of go back to another spot to find a good spot to anchor, how is the quality of the concrete elsewhere on various parts of the plant? Okay, it's a question, people won't know until they further into it, but it's concerning. it's concerning, even for a non-engineer like me.
Good point.
Uh, this is, uh, this probably should have been, uh, closer or right beside the, uh, screening process. The right-hand side is mechanical screens. The left-hand side, I believe that comes from the grit chambers, which have been offline for, I think, at least fifteen years, if not longer.
So what does this do right here?
Uh, normally, uh, what'll happen is the grit would be like sand, you know, small gravel, things like that, that would get through the screens that if they got into the, uh, plant, they would, uh, most of the time, they're too heavy to be carried by the, the velocity, by the current going through your system. And so they'll settle out to the bottom of your basins.
Do they plug up your plant or they'll tear up your pumps, right?
Or they'll chew up your capacity. Uh, we had one, uh, system we took over and, uh, brought down the system. I think they had twenty-foot deep, uh, oxidation ditches. Uh, their grit removal had been offline, I think shortly after it was installed. And I think it had fourteen foot of silt once everything was drained down.
So this system's been offline for fifteen years?
Uh, at least that, from what we were told.
Okay.
Uh, and like I say, not everything is gloomy doom with this either. So, you know, here's, you know, one of our, uh, one of the clarifier basins out there, fairly good shape, you know. You can see, you know, the fencing there, the routine maintenance touch-up type stuff. But, you know, not everything is gloomy doom there. Don't want to give that impression to anyone at all either. So, next one. And, uh, this is, uh, the holding pond for your reuse water there. Again, you know, very good shape, you know, wonderful program that we've got. Uh, there in the background, I think part of that black just, uh, over the far, uh, wall there, that's either part of the, uh, emergency, uh, overflow that had, uh, I think the liner on that had blown away several years away. It blew up. And, uh, is it need a replacement? Or that's one of the areas where, uh, for the, uh, sludge handling, it's taken out there and dried out further before it thawed off.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. So we kind of get back into, okay, what's, what's the real benefit that we're talking about here? So, you know, I, I'm a numbers guy and I look at, you know, the benefits that the city can realize. Not only what the system is worth today that you would get as part of this, but also the avoidance of spending the kind of money we're talking about to rehabilitate the plant and put in new lines and things, lift stations, whatever. Um, so, uh, I gave you some reasons here. Um, we would utilize our expertise to shorten the timeline of a complete rebuild. Um, one of the things that we found with Mr. Hartman was, you know, our question was, do we need to just build a brand-new plant? There's plenty of room, right? Um, but we determined that it would probably be quicker, um, and more cost-effective to rehabilitate the existing facility. So we believe that we can do that and we believe that we can do that within a very short timeline. I'm thinking once, now, the process of, we've done almost four hundred acquisitions and, you know, there's a, there's a lot of people that would look at this in, in addition to council and legal and there's also P U C. We would immediately file fair market value with P U C. P U C would assign three appraisers. Those appraisers don't work for us, but we pay for them. So the city doesn't pay for anything. And then P U C accepts what, the median out of the three?
Average of three appraisers.
Average of three. So the value is set by P U C. So there's, there's more than just us, you know. So the value of the system will be established by P U C. But that, that process of approval from start to finish is probably eight or nine months. So, you know, we figured if council wanted to do this, that, you know, all of twenty twenty-four, most of twenty twenty-four would be the approval process. So we'd really start cranking up the next year. That's with engineering and we try to push as much of the, the overhaul of the plant into year two as possible. But right now, on our tenure plan, which I did share with most council, um, you know, we've laid out that the plant would be through in five years. So that's a complete rebuild. And we, I can tell you, you know, this, this would be our flagship in Texas. We do operate large systems like this in other places. But in Texas, we, we got our way into Texas buying smaller systems. Um, we are slowly, and municipal acquisition in Texas is brand-new. It's not new in other states. Texas is pretty far behind. But with the amount of capital that's needed in cities across the state, this is going to be the way it is. Much like electricity is run by private companies, much like, uh, gas is run by private companies, garbage, lot of the garbage. So I believe that very soon, this is not going to be uncommon, that the state has made it that much easier to do. But some of the other things that I mentioned, you're already doing a massive upgrade to the water plant. This would take a huge burden off of staff. From a financial standpoint, it would take the burden off you to come up with additional resources because this does need addressing pretty quickly. The liability to the city of a major spill or injuries by personnel exists today. If we were able to do this, we will take on that liability, obviously, as part of this. But we would also start from day one to address some of the issues that we see that are the black swans, as I heard this week. So, um, definitely, we would start on day one. And then lastly, the money from the Pioneer contract would not be used anymore to pay for whatever it, it goes for now, whether it's capital improvement, projects. It would be an ongoing revenue stream for the city. And we believe that with the upgrade of the plant and the additions of growth that we would be able to handle in other parts of the city, that you guys want to service today, that that's going to bring in and increase the volume of the reuse that's generated, which can be used to give to the golf course and other entities also. I mean, we could literally, we've seen in other cities, they've got a hydrant right there. They sell reused water and contractors can come fill up the truck and take off. Someday, that could happen here, too. That'd be very easy to do. So these are just some of the reasons. And then we talk about, again, here, our experience. We can operate plants for less. Their automation, their economies of scale. We buy hundreds of pumps, thousands of meters. We've got national contracts. We can react fast. We don't have to go through an R F P process. As I told you about the, the pump that we fixed within two weeks, that would take most cities six months to go through an R P process. So we can react fast and we can do what's needed to be done. I mentioned, we want to be part of the community. The sale gives Odessa the ability to handle new growth, which also increases an entire regen, revenue stream from Pioneer. We discussed the proceeds of the sale. Uh, it would be a significant addition to the city in revenue, that the city can address things like roads, uh, things like paying off water debt, water utility debt. I mean, there's just a variety of reasons. This doesn't come along every day for a city. I can assure you of that. Lastly, a couple of things. Cities retain rate jurisdiction, which means that we would negotiate the rates with the city. The idea that a private company would be able to come in and just raise rates to whatever they want is entirely false. The cities always retain original rate jurisdiction. You had to say so. Um, we would negotiate rates with you and lay out a tenure plan for what we think those rates are going to be, what we would guarantee those rates would be. And then lastly, the city can buy back. We include it in every single acquisition that we did. And I shared with, with some of you, um, really how the city, without putting in any money from taxpayers, could use the proceeds and then the revenue stream from the Pioneer to buy back the system in five years with not one dollar from private citizens.
Troy, when you say,
So there is a capability there.
When you say buy back the system in five years, so how would y'all decide what the system was worth in five years?
Well, you would use the formula is original price minus depreciation and upgrades.
Yeah, so we'd take the, uh, purchase price. We put this right in the asset purchase agreement. If at any time, for any reason, the city wants to buy back the wastewater system, the formula is purchase price, pays back the money we paid the city for the system, um, plus any improvements that we made, minus the depreciation out of those improvements, right? So if we spent a hundred million dollars on improvements in the system and depreciated off three percent a year, you know, you would only pay the net value of those assets at the time that you decide to exercise your option. It's a very simple formula. And so I'll say this, because, look, it's my job. I'm sure you never want to buy back. We're a good community partner. We do a good job. And we're here at your council meetings explaining all the good stuff that we're doing in the community at your plant. But Troy, Troy says it's true. Um, look, we have all the economies of scale. We buy things on national contract. We're spending a billion and a half dollars a year in capital across the country. We have vendors lined up to do business with us and give us low pricing in order in exchange for a national contract we work with exclusively. We can bring that efficiency, that cost savings on to customers here in Odessa and lower the cost of, of doing improvements at the plant. And if for any reason, after five years, if we're done improving the plant and you decide you want to buy it back, at the worst case, you're buying it back at a lower unit cost than you would have otherwise if you'd built it, built it and fixed it yourself, right? Now, again, my job is to make sure that you don't want to do that, that you want to do business, continue to have us. But it is a commitment that we make so that we ensure that our team here is, is fulfilling our commitment that we're making you today, right? Because if we go up front and say, like, for any reason you want to buy it back, no squabble, the formula is this, if you want to buy it back, you can buy it back. It ensures that we continue to do what we're supposed to be doing, right? It's a, it's a, it's a commitment that we make, right?
All right. Troy, you mentioned that the city will, city will always control the rates. And you say you live in Texas and you've been, I guess, negotiating and have, uh, have other systems somewhere else in Texas. Um, where does Odessa, Texas stand in the way of, as a citizen, I would want to know, where do we stand in comparison to other cities in Texas in our water rates?
I would say they're definitely lower than most cities that I've seen.
Odessa is.
Water and sewer, yes. Um, you know, I've got rates from a lot of cities that, cities that I go in and talk to like this. And we look at the cities around them or some of them are systems that are, have water supply corporations around them that service that areas outside the city. And so, you know, you, you kind of get an idea of what they're, they're going at. Um, and I can tell you, they're way, way lower than almost any city I've seen.
Troy, historically, have you, just historically, looking back, have you actually had any buybacks?
No.
Zero?
No. And I, I will tell you, when I was, when I joined Aqua and I, I went and trained with some of my counterparts in other states, the thing that impressed me was the number of cities we were talking to that had already sold one system, that were coming back and saying, are you interested in, in the next system, the, the second system? That, to me, says it all. It must have went well, right? Um, so we, we have a list of testimonials from mayors that we've worked with in the past. Again, this, this idea of public-private partnership is something that's only going to increase in every way, whether it's parks, whether it's utilities, you name it, road building, whatever it is. This is the way that I believe the cities are going to be going in the future. Uh, it makes the most sense. You get somebody else to pay for something you would have otherwise paid for. Why wouldn't you do that, right? Uh, so I believe it's going to increase. And look, we, we would be at your council meetings. We would be in your planning meetings when they want us there. Um, you know, if you've got a significant project coming up, you know, our involvement would, would be ongoing. So we would like at first, you know, a great relationship with the city. We think we can bring some things to the city outside of this. We've got one of the best labs in the country. So literally, it's a state-of-the-art lab. Now, you guys have a good lab, so it may not be needed as much here. But, you know, we can test for things like PFOS to levels that the E P is, is saying that a lot of labs aren't able to get to. We can do that. So we can also utilize our expertise. Look, I mean, if we're partners with you guys and you getting a jam on, on the water side, it lets, God forbid, there, there's a disaster. Look, we're here to help, right? So this idea that we would be totally separate, we would be a partner with you guys going forward.
Yeah, I think one thing I can add to that, too, is that, uh, we, we would expect to enter into a franchise agreement with the city. Uh, you know, you would regulate us just as well as P U C or T C Q, but I like customer service stuff for how you want us to work in your loadways and things like that. So I would expect we'd do like a franchise agreement where we could lay out the things that we commit to do and the things you expect us to do in your community.
Is it T C Q or P U C that, um, monitors wastewater plants and, uh, subjects cities to citations if, uh, conditions are not being under code or whatever?
T C Q, yes.
T C Q?
Yeah.
And based on Mr. Alden, what you said earlier, uh, your engineering and inspection and all that, does our wastewater plant have that possibility of some citations?
No.
Uh, that'd probably be the best answer by T C Q. I know that, uh, they tend to, uh, give a stern look if an investor-owned or, uh, private company, uh, has responsibility for a plant versus, uh, a public. I'd say there's always a possibility because, you know, I know conditions is one of the things that they also like to cite. So it, with, uh, you know, some of the conditions, some of the things, it may be something may not impact operations, but still might cite you for the condition of something. So again, I did not go through this as, you know, as a T C Q inspector and had no intention of doing so. So on that, yeah, I don't know if I'm the best one to, to say whether it would or not. But there's always a possibility.
Yeah.
But one of the things I would mention, too, I've done, I've done, the company's done a lot of these transactions, but I, myself, I've worked on twenty-five different transactions like this. And it's always good to get in touch with folks and work with them. So you can kind of see things a little further down the track and do some proactive investment to head off. What might be potential issues somewhere down the road, right? That's any system in America, right? It's not, it's not unique to one system or whatever, but
Any and many.
Yeah. So, uh, we would love to try to partner up with, uh, the city, its staff, and try to divide one of the top projects right away. We have our ideas based on what a consultant did. But, you know, what's that, the staff is great. They took us around. I'm sure if we sat down with them within their rooms and said, what are the top projects you'd want to do? We'd want to know that, right? We want the local knowledge. We want the people that have been here and understand the community more than anybody. And, um, so we'd, we'd work to try to head, head off anything that would potentially come down the road way ahead in advance of that.
Okay.
So last one, I promise.
This is the one where we used to, you didn't bring me just a quick, uh, the computer board, right? Uh, so, you know, Troy might be, what kind of options, really anything that you'd like to do. If you're interested in this concept and you'd like to have further discussions, we did a lot of investigation. We did a lot of analysis, um, you know, how, how, uh, price impacts rates, all these different things we've done. And so there's different ways that the city council could address this. And, um, you know, one of the things we'd like to do is, is have a chance to talk with you more about it, right? To answer your questions. There's a ton of questions. What would happen in this case? How do we handle growth? Um, how would we prioritize projects? Those are all things we'd like to sit down and talk to you and your staff about. So everybody's got a really good, clear picture of what a transaction would look like with Aqua. And so, you know, one of the things we'd be asking for, if you're interested in doing that, right, perhaps there's a timeframe we could get together and, uh, and kind of look through those issues with the goal of identifying if this is something that's viable for the city of Odessa.
Council?
So before, as you know, uh, these are some, uh, three options that, uh, Aqua's proposing. But, uh, if we have questions, um, any other scenarios they haven't thought about, you know, now's the time to ask. Uh, and then, uh, some recommendations of, um, how we move forward. Um, and speaking to, to, to Aqua, I did say, I know, uh, staff has a lot of questions. Uh, started, I spoke with staff way before, after I initially made contact with Troy. He just happened to be coming through, uh, this part of the country, say, ah, come on, stop by. And, uh, and, and there was initial, just a conversation between, uh, four people, uh, wanting to learn more about it. I think the council was, uh, curious, wanting to kick the tires. Uh, since then, there's been a lot of conversation. Um, I think that, uh, I know I would like to see Aqua send, speak to the, to the staff. I think that, I know I would like to see Aqua and speak to the staff, ask questions, scenarios, because here the thing is, we're talking billing, expansion of new projects, the city continues to grow, how we work with contractors.
Impact fees.
Impact fees. And so the thing is, there's a lot of questions and we can't all put it in the next 10 minutes. And so I think the first step in my recommendation was to put together a committee, go into discussions quickly, immediately, get our answers asked, get a response, go through it with a fine comb tooth, and then see what that purchase price would be, rates, how that will handle out, dollar amounts. And then report back to the council with everything being satisfactory of what we plan, and then make a decision then. And then if we wanted to go into a 30-day standard RFP. I will say this, is that this is new to the state. We are their testing ground. There's no other system here in the state that you've seen as big as the city of Odessa.
Not as big as you.
Yeah. And so, one thing is, is that, not escaped is whether the city does this or not. Issues that exist at the bomb derington are not going away. Something has to be done. The system and the growth that we're experiencing that's coming is just going to put more pressure on the system. You know, I was never under the belief that our water system, our treatment plant was at the point that it was going to collapse within the next 24 hours and we need to make a decision. This, I can't say that that's where we're at, but I also can't say with confidence that it's not. Because of the nature of the plant. But I do know this, is that something has to be done, we have to address it, we cannot kick this. There's just no way. And the violations are real. There's been a history of violations in the past, and we had to be very careful about how we discuss that. But that's my recommendation. I've asked a lot of questions, I've asked about the impact fees, then we've asked about how do we address, you know, contractors, how do we address development? How we address inside and outside requests that we constantly get. The smuds also play a future here, especially in the unincorporated areas. I think that's an option, grow to east Odessa, north Odessa. I think that, I think we're at a point where we have to have that full discussion and we have the capabilities. What our limitations are. My main concern is personnel. That's a big concern. Continuing to be able to manage, recruit, retain is always a challenge. What does that look like? What does it look like for you? And there's a lot of questions that we can't solve in the next seven minutes. But ask questions now and see if we're on the same page.
My problem with the whole deal is, my concern is, if we decide to do it ourselves at the current interest rate environment, when we did the water treatment plant, did the COs for that, I think our rate was, Seth can correct me, I think it was like 1.2% interest? Something like that's what the average rate is. Today, we're at 5, 6, 7%. I don't see how we can float GOs, COs, revenue bonds, whatever you want to float, and be able to pay for it.
And this is.
It's a problem.
Not have, it would, the rates would be extremely.
High.
Yep, it would be high, and so.
And that means, that means we're going to have to go up on the water rates to be able to fund it. I mean, I think that's the only way we can get there.
So. Kennedy Horn did a study, I think back in 2018?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, 287?
Yes, sir.
Something like that. I think it all depends on, you know, if we just get a hundred million, if you take that and invest that at the same 5%, we're talking about paying. And then you have, you know, we still have our pioneer money. And anyway, we get a lot, we get the billing expense off of us. Is that correct? You ought to be billing.
We have not discussed billing, so.
That's one of the things that we have to discuss. But whatever it is that would come off of our expense side of this whole equation is going to be on them and not on us. And I don't know what that number is. I don't know what we're even paying a year on repairs and maintenance. You know, but that all goes away.
You didn't put that in this proposal?
I did not.
No. So that's a big question right there, so.
That's a huge savings that we really didn't get into.
I know we won't be collecting the revenue from the billing, but we will also have that expense, correct? I mean, that's going to be on y'all.
That's what I was trying to say. Thank you, Mark.
Yep. It's usually, and I'm not going to answer the question that didn't ask me, but traditionally in these transactions, the cost avoidance is even greater than the purchase price or the other things.
Yeah.
Well, my suggestion is to put a committee together. I think that we need staff members on there, take some, I think we need billing on there. We need public works. Public works or it would be, what else would it be?
Utilities.
Utilities, I'm sorry. I don't know why it was escaping me. I would speak up now or get voluntold. I'll start throwing people on there. Okay, there it goes. Deputy managers, you also going to be on there? Who on council wants to draw the short stick? I'll get on there since I'm the one that pushed the car into motion, so. I'll volunteer myself. And so who wants to join me in my misery?
I think she doesn't have finance involved.
Oh, yeah, he's involved. He doesn't even have to be told, he's involved.
He's involved.
Yeah, he's the one with the checkbook, yeah. I've already got questions from just this right here that I want to ask you. I'll start throwing people on, who wants to do it?
Mr. Vaskis, if we get on there.
All right, we'll give Mr. Vaskis under one more. Look, don't hide it with your councilman hand.
I'm hard to deal with.
That's good.
Volunteer me.
Volunteer yourself.
I can only do it if you volunteer me.
Okay, I'll volunteer you. So we'll have, so we'll put this committee together. Once again, we're going to wind up getting the city secretary to organize this whole thing. So we're going to have billing, utilities, public works, finance, deputy city manager. Who did I miss?
City attorney? No.
No, not yet.
You don't need him yet.
If he gets involved, then it's a whole different project. And so, and it'll be mayor's office, councilman, or councilman District 5, Haney, and councilmember District 3, Vaskis. You think it? Anybody else?
Troy, can I add one thing, too? I think one thing, without verbalizing, what concerns me in my mind, and I challenge you to sharpen your sword on this, is we have our own number crunchers here, too. I'd like your number crunching ability compared to our number crunchers. And let's look at this real closely from the financial aspect.
Yep.
You can do that.
Yeah, we really didn't have access to information on O and M, right? Off, you know, operations and maintenance enough to kind of put any figures in there. We can guesstimate what those would be, but yeah, if we could get those, that'd be great. And then actual expenses, even for things like, you know, that are associated with the sewer plant. Because some of the money, some of the things are, some of the improvement projects are paid for by pioneer money. Others are not, so just that kind of thing.
Yeah. Well, the other question, one other question that I've got is that by doing this, the three appraisals from PUC, I think are very important. I know there's a, I think there's an attitude out there that a hundred million dollars is, the plant's worth a lot more than that. Who's to say it is or it isn't? But if you just go with the availability of the interest rates where they are, even at a hundred million, and then we lose all the expenses, those numbers could be pretty large. If PUC comes back and the appraisers and the average is, you know, 150, that's even a game changer more than, you know, plus the expenses. So I don't see any downside by looking.
And even hypothetically, if you, hypothetically, we gave you a go, because of the appraisals, you couldn't even get going until about six months, could you say?
Probably longer than that.
Six, seven, eight?
Appraisal process, once we have an asset purchase agreement, then we would engage the commission to file what's called a notice of intent to determine parametric value. And then they would assign three appraisers to the project, and then it'd take about three or four months to do that. And then we enter into what's called an STM, a system transfer merger. And that takes probably a number of.
Because what we're talking about here is just not the plant, it's the entire system, the transmission system. So a lot of miles of pipe.
Lift stations?
Lift stations.
Yep.
Valves, it's a lot.
We take it all on. Yep. New stuff, you take it on, too? Whatever news coming up? We fix it if it breaks. I'm talking about new stuff. Yeah, the new areas, correct. Yep.
Scary. No, it's good. Any other questions? Guys, did we leave anything out?
Yeah, thank you for the time. Appreciate it. Appreciate your interest.
Did you get an elbow? Did you get the look?
I did, but we do need a little consensus that you're going to do this.
Yes, yes. Gee, just jumped the gun, I suppose it's going to be my next deal. I'm glad you're getting kicked in the chin, not me.
I'm the one getting the elbow, I'm the one that broke my elbow.
So council, so going to seek consensus to move forward by putting in a, a committee?
I'm on board.
And so with the, you have everyone's name. Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Not there?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Forward.
Forward. We good? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
We'll start scheduling the meetings and start getting down, put.
Yes, sir.
Pen to paper. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, now we can wake up. I saw, I mean, these guys were putting everybody to sleep, I apologize. You know, that needed to wrap up because we're losing the crowd. We're going to move on to item number three, discuss purchase of 11 better thermal image cameras. Come on.
Good afternoon, mayor and council.
Good afternoon.
Odessa Fire is requesting the purchase of 11 new Bullard thermal cameras. The ones we currently have now have reached their end of life and they're no longer serviceable. Nobody will work on them. So what these cameras are, we use them to search for victims in fires. We use them to search for hotspots during overhaul. We've even used them on, you know, car wrecks out in a field. We're able to pick up the body heat off of people. So these are a very important part of what we do, and we're just.
And the 11 are on body or you hold them?
So what they are is, you can tether them to your bunkers and usually what the captains will have them with them. And they just tether to yourself and swing while you're in a fire.
And this will cover every station?
Yes, sir, this will cover every station. We purchased four of them last year for our new units and a couple more, but this will get our whole fleet replaced. Because as of right now, if one goes out, we have to steal one off of another unit. Yes, sir.
Borrow, beg and steal?
Yes, sir.
Money's coming from?
This will come from our capital outlay budget. So Station 9 is our designated thermal station. And so we're going to use that out of that capital outlay.
Is wrapping up the end of the monies for your budget year? Or are we, or is this going to be a new budget?
Hopefully this will remain, hopefully this will remain next year as well.
Is it one time?
Yes, sir.
Council questions?
Is it true that the Bullard camera is, you could throw it against that wall over there, go pick it up, and it would still be working? I've heard they're very durable.
They are firefighter-proof. That's truly obvious.
Council, any questions, discussion? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Going to move on to item five, discuss and consider options. Bring back fuel back under the control of the city. Mr. Adams?
Hi, your council. I was brought on board, I did like everybody else and you went through my budget, highlighted some items that I thought that we could save money on. Fuel being one of them. As you can see, fiscal year 2022, it's been a grand total of after rebates, I thought that was a little excessive. 2023 fiscal year through the end of June, we spent $256,432.37. Based on all that, I reached out to some companies and kind of put a plan that we could bring fuel back under our custody and control. This would, we would be putting two 10,000 gallon tanks of unleaded and diesel at the Cool Road facility, also at the Time Machine, and that remaining at strategic locations around the city, IT fire stations. Then we would also put two 500 gallon tanks, one front loaded and one for diesel at Rattler Golf Course, take care of that equipment. Doing so, it would be a significant cost savings for the fuel itself. It would avoid theft and it would avoid misuse. I'm not saying there's any theft or misuse, but if there was, it would eliminate it. There's two options that we have. First option being, we would purchase all of the equipment, fuel tanks, pay for the labor to install, et cetera, at all locations for a grand total of $729,585 in one penny. Doing this option, it would allow us to purchase fuel from any company, any vendor that we wanted to. We would not be locked in that, any vendor, we would just have the upfront cash outlay. Option two is vendor would provide the equipment to us. And to cover the cost of the equipment, we would agree to pay a 10 cent surcharge on every gallon of fuel that we purchase. This option also allows us to hedge, which, that's just a reduction of risk due to negative impacts of price fluctuation. Basically, we would agree to purchase every quarter X number of gallons at X price. If the price of fuel goes up, it's good for us. If the price of fuel goes down, it's good for the vendor. If we had this in place right now compared to the year today, if we did option one, where we purchased all the fuel, or purchased all the equipment outright, just the diesel alone, we would save $347,492.22 up to the end of June. On the unleaded, we would save approximately $120,988.8. If we went with option two, where we just paid 10% surcharge, we would have saved $372,208.85 on diesel. And on unleaded, we would have so far saved $93,429. The picture there, that's the terminal that would be at each location, would also have a fob. It's a funny looking fob that they would have to stick into the machine, into the terminal here. They would also have to put in the code, their code just like we do now, plus the mileage.
Chris, I'm getting, can you talk in the microphone? Because I don't know if these guys back here can, nobody can hear you back there. I see them shaking their head.
Sorry. So the picture here on the screen is of the terminal that would be at each fuel location. It would either be a card, a fob, but either way it would include a user code and you would have to input the mileage.
Chris, is that a camera or is that just a digital readout?
That's just a digital readout. We can have IT install cameras at the locations, but unless you have the card or the fob and the PIN code and the correct mileage within 200 miles plus or minus, it's not going to turn on. I mean, you can beat it to death, whatever, it will not turn the pump on. This would also, it would track critical fleet data such as gallons used by the truck, gallons used by the driver, the odometer readings. It would enable more accurate tracking of mileage for services. It would allow us to basically break down our fuel usage per hour, per mile, per tenth of a mile if we wanted to go that far. And then we could allocate the. And then we could allocate the fuel per department with absolutely no problem, it would not require us to spend the countless hours that we do now, breaking it up by, you know, what was used on this vehicle, where that vehicle goes to, et cetera. And then, basically, the last picture is just of what a sample tank looks like. We could do two ten-thousand gallon tanks at each location, or at the fire stations, we could do one ten-thousand gallon tank that's divided in half for unleaded or diesel. So that's the proposal that I have. Y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Where at a rapid would you, you're proposing to put these?
Well, the two tanks would take the place of where they are now, back by the, uh, uh, maintenance sheds.
Oh, okay.
Now, those are two five-hundred gallon tanks now, that we actually have to call pilot to come fill up.
So, so basically, uh, we would have the police, fire, uh, city, different departments? Uh, have vehicles, several?
Pretty much every department.
Okay.
The main issues that we're running into with fire and some of the police vehicles is the ability for them to get in, in and out of the local gas stations that they have to fuel up at. Cause they're really tight, some of the overhangs are too low for them to get under, not enough parking lot space for them to get in and turn around. I mean, I know, I, on my way to work, I see solid waste, having to actually back up on the road up to the pump. To stop traffic and then back into the parking lot to be able to make the curve to get to the pump.
So do we have negotiated rates right now with, where people are, we're just paying retail?
We pay retail, and then they issue us rebates.
Based on what?
Based on what?
I, I don't know, I can't find anything firmly that I could answer that question with a hundred percent certainty. I know that they are part of buy board, so that we do get rebates through buy board back.
So you haven't seen anything physically that you can basically?
No, I just see the rebate, we get a bill every Monday for the previous week's fuel, and they just put a rebate on them. But it doesn't say, you know, how many cents a gallon, I mean, I, we could go back and do the math, but I've never been able to get it to come out right.
Okay, I wanna, Chief, you got any comments on this? Chief?
You said help?
He said help.
Okay. Seeing how we have about ten fuel companies in this town, we also have the reliability of D K, which is a refinery here that we could buy fuel direct from, have we tried pricing with these guys and equipment from them?
No, I have not.
Okay.
I would, now that's, I'm basically just wanting to see if this was something that y'all were interested in pursuing before I submitted it forward.
Any effort, so what, if, if, if we get a consensus that we wanna go forward and look at it, what, what are we looking at, timeframe, what, what's gonna go into, into it?
I could probably have, uh, answers from additional companies within thirty days.
I think it's worth taking a look at it.
And then this would also.
I've always wondered why I see a fire truck over, over a lawn filling up with retail diesel line.
Yeah, I didn't realize.
It looks kinda, I always wondered that.
No, I, I, I've never seen bigger vehicles, I mean, I've seen, you know, uh, you know, our, our first responders, but I didn't realize that we're doing all the vehicles, and I, I've never seen one.
Everything has a card, and then also doing it this way, bringing it in-house, a lot of our locations where I want to put tanks have standby generators, so if we go back into a Snoma Garden or something else like that again, we'll have the ability to get fuel.
Are we gonna have additional costs for the equipment, things that nature?
If we go with the purchase outright, then yes, we're responsible for all the maintenance on the equipment, upgrades, if we need more fobs, it, going, purchasing the equipment outright, it basically works off of a headcount, just like any other software would. If we purchase through the vendor and just pay the ten cents a gallon on top of the price, then they cover all maintenance, if the equipment needs to be updated, they come out, update it, replace it if necessary, they provide, the headcount basically goes away. And all, they, it's basically under warranty for as long as we have the.
I'd like to look at it both ways.
Okay.
And, um, okay.
Chris, there's a, there'll be that one time big, uh, cost of, uh, seven hundred and thirty thousand for all the tanks to be at all the locations, but if we're only paying four sixty-eight, then the savings that we make, that we receive in the first year will pay for that.
Correct.
Well, some of these companies offer free tanks, as long as you're using their fuel, they'll bring you the tanks and furnish the tanks.
Correct. And it's the equipment on top of that that is the large part.
Okay.
But we can buy the equi, like I said, we can buy the equipment, we can buy the, uh, software, we can buy all of that, pay for it, it's our software, and then we can use any fuel vendor that we want to do.
Uh, built into the proposal, the, the option for the cameras.
Okay.
With a clear visibility of the vehicle, vehicle number, and, uh, the person.
Okay.
Just as an added feature, might as well look at it while we're, we're kicking the tires.
Understood.
Adding to that, the, I love the cost savings, I love the convenience, but I think also, I look at also the security of those tanks.
Okay.
Council, any other questions?
Just a comment, I, I like the idea of paying the vendor to take care of the maintenance, it's just another expense off our back.
Yep.
And it's a cheap way to do it, in my opinion.
Yeah, definitely.
For ten cents.
Mr. Adams, anything else on it?
Like you said, we're.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item six, discuss the Odessa Development Corporation O D C budget, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Mr. Crowe.
Is this gonna take long? I'm just gonna ask for a break.
I know you've been waiting all day to see me, Councilman.
Do, does anybody need to take a quick break?
No.
You sure? I, I, you know, I can get up and go.
I was just.
Y'all's world, I'm just camping out in it, so.
Go for it.
Honorable Mayor, distinguished council, thank you so much for your time today. Uh, so, as we do every year, the Odessa Development Corporation is bringing forth their annual budget for your review. Uh, just gonna hit a couple of the highlights, so based on our estimated tax receipts, we're being pretty conservative. Last year, for twenty-one to twenty-two, of course, we're not completely through twenty-two to twenty-three yet, we brought in a little under twelve point five million dollars in tax revenue. We're estimating for this year, just to be conservative, about twelve million. Total expenses, uh, that don't include our incentives, uh, we're estimating to be about two point seven million this year, that's gonna be up from two point four. And then normally, we use the total remaining fund balance as our estimated incentives, because that's why we exist. But in the past, if you, looking at the budget, you'll see that, uh, last year, uh, or sorry, in twenty-two, twenty-one to twenty-two, we did four point seven million in incentives, the year before that was three point seven, hence the ability of our fund balance to grow each year. Overall, do you have any questions on the budget as it sits, you'll see the cost for each vendor contract included?
What we, we, we've told out, it was up a million dollars, is this, uh, new, and also some of the, uh, the, the grants that we have ongoing?
I'm sorry, can you say that one time?
Okay, so basically, we had said, we had, last year, we were at three million, is that what we gave out?
Uh, three point, I'm sorry, I left my glasses in the car, so y'all bear with me.
Twenty-one, twenty-two?
That sounds right.
Was, uh, three million, right?
Yes, sir.
And then for twenty, uh, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three?
Uh-huh, it was, um, right now, so far, twenty-one to twenty-two is one, was, uh, the total is one million nine sixty-nine, and this year, year to date, it's two million four twenty-five.
Okay. And that, and that's new and ongoing?
That's correct.
Okay. And it would be up more, but we didn't, uh, Nacer didn't ask for the, their million for, uh.
Yes, sir, that's correct, this year for their grant. Even though we do still have that money reserved, they can come back in the future, if they meet, uh, all of the requirements for their contract next year, for both year two and year three, they could actually request four million.
Both, both?
Yes, sir.
So I don't, it's one thing I don't understand, I don't understand why you, why you put most of your reserves in the business incentive line, so that it reduces, reduces your fund balance, makes it look like you've only got ten million dollars in fund balance, which is not true.
I would wholeheartedly agree with that, and I would defer that to our city financial department.
Yeah. I asked Mr. Bowles that question.
Great question.
Because I, I, I think that's smoke and mirrors.
Hi, Seth. Hello, Councilman, Mr. Mayor. The, on the second page in that document, there is a little green box under number thirteen for the notes and assumptions that are made. Talking about where, this is where that budgeted number at the very bottom that's calculated, the twenty point nine million, that is, this calculation is performed to see the, give the O D C the ability to what new agreements they can make. Except is that amount unreserved? Of unreserved, yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, the, the, the big question on like the fifty million, the fifty-eight million, that, I mean, balance has been there for the past few years of budgeting that way, to have those funds available in that area, but as y'all all can see, those incentives come, you know, depending on what is paid out each year based on those contracts in place, normally, they're, correct me if I'm wrong, the five-year contracts payments out, and if they meet those requirements, then they get that, those funds that are paid out, and so there's, there's short-term reserves and long-term reserves. With that, though, depending on the compliance audits that get looked at, the, the timing of those audits, is when all those gets paid out, so that reserve constantly changes. Now, why is that balance so high? It's always been that way to cover that, those, just in case there's a big change. Now, in, I believe, twenty eighteen, maybe fiscal year twenty seventeen, there was a big charge in that account for business incentives, but going forward, as you can see on the actual data here, it's a little bit smaller every year, because those, those grantees are falling more in line with the timing of the contracts, the payments, and then the compliance audits.
The reason I understand is, just in case we have other big incentives come in for this year, grants that we wouldn't want to do, they're gonna have the budgeting and saying, you know, we have the full fifty million there available, less anything that's already reserved, so we have to budget for it on the front side, because in addition, we have the ability, each month, we can always do a budget minimum to do so.
No, I just think it, I just think, yeah, I just think it, it looks funny, just, it's, you know, it's, it's in your fund balance, so it's always available, all you gotta do is move it. So I'd like to see that, I'd like to see that change, I mean, one of the things we talked about is, you know, we're not doing things the same way as we always have done them, so that's a bad answer, so.
The way we've always done them.
Yeah, right, so.
That's a great suggestion, you know, if you, if you would let us get together with the city accounting, and see if there's a cleaner way to do that.
To me, that's not clean, so.
Absolutely, and we want to be as clean and transparent as absolutely possible.
People, the community needs to see what your fund balance is as it grows, because your sales tax is going up every month, it goes higher, and I suspect this month it'll be even higher, so. Well, you can hope, it's, it's been, it's been pretty consistent, going up every month, so, I don't see any difference for the next two months anyway, so.
Okay, who would get back, get back with us?
Thanks, Seth.
You're welcome, and I'll get back with you on that too.
Thank you.
That's it? Any good, council questions, comments? All right. We'll just move it over and go to, uh, to, uh, put it on the agenda. Uh, item seven, discuss the Odessa Development Corporation contract agreements, Mr. Crowe?
So, every year, we also bring forth all of the, uh, vendor contract agreements, which would include the Midland Odessa Transit Authority, uh, Small Business Development Center at U T P B, Black Chamber of Commerce, uh, our marketing company, in this case, this year is Current Media, um, our contract with the city to provide, uh, city administrative services, and of course, our contract with the chamber. So, this year, we, the, the major contract that had one change was the chamber's contract. How would you guys like to talk about these, we can go through each one at a time?
Council, do you want to go each, one at a time? All right, so, go ahead.
Okay, so MoTran, for example, was no changes from last year in their contract, their budget stayed exactly the same, uh, we had no asks for additional services and no suggestions, so it stayed exactly the same. Same thing with the, you know, U T B B Small Business Development Center, um, they continue to do, uh, all of their training, all their guidance as far as, uh, business planning for our individuals, uh, helping them with financing, um, tutorials for our individuals in the city, uh, everything from QuickBooks to filing business plans, to marketing and advertising, to securing financing, they do a great job as well. The O D C board didn't ask for any changes in anything that they do, and they didn't bring forth any suggestions, so we kept that contract exactly the same as well. Current media was a change, uh, earlier in the year, as you're aware, we changed over from C V A advertising to current media. They've done a fantastic job, if you guys had a chance to look at the new website, it looks, it looks great, uh, they're doing a great job of transitioning, um, some of our advertising, and really targeting specific areas for bringing in new companies to the area, as well as working on our expansion of existing businesses that are here. Um, we're also expanding some of our thoughts and talking about doing workforce, uh, training and, uh, workforce expansion, um, so that all looked fantastic, I'm assuming you guys had a chance to review their budget, uh, was in line with last year's budget with C V A. So excited to see what they're gonna bring forth, but no changes to their contract, as it was written originally in March as well. Any questions there? Uh, Black Chamber, also no change, they didn't ask for anything additional, um, they continued to work diligently to, uh, help a demographic here in Odessa that definitely needs help, and they're doing a great job. We didn't ask for any changes, uh, just asked them that, again, they continue to work forward to try to bring us some projects forward that we could fund, um, but, uh, no questions or changes on the Black Chamber. And then, uh, the last one would be, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, we did have one change there, uh, this is a contract that's been, really started in nineteen ninety-eight, so twenty-five years, and going back and looking, we haven't seen where it's ever really been reviewed, so we asked, we put this contract on a quarterly contract. Um, we've started doing some due diligence just to reach out, there are seven hundred and seventy economic development corporations across the state of Texas, and of those, there's fifty-seven, uh, that have revenues really in excess of five million dollars, and out of those, there's still just a very small fraction that's still contracted with, as a vendor with our Chamber of Commerce, and to be honest, we just don't know what we don't know. You know, um, how do these economic development corporations out there calculate return on investment? Are we looking at jobs, are we looking at payroll, are we looking at taxable capital investment, um, what kind of expenses do they look at, you know, how do they run their budgets, is there, is there a better way? We don't know what we don't know. So the change in the contract is just to give us time to kind of look at that, but we think we can get these answers fairly quickly, three to six months probably, and then either come back and say, hey, Chamber, you guys are doing a fantastic job, let's continue on down the road, we've done our due diligence, we've done everything that council's asked us to do, which is to get the best value out of every tax dollar we're spending, or we may have found a little better way, maybe there's another provider that can do economic development a little better. Again, we don't know what we don't know, and that's why we put that on a three, on a quarterly contract as opposed to annual.
What were the changes to the contract from the previous year?
We put them on quarterly, the, the budget went up by about two hundred thousand dollars for them, which was approved by O D C, they'll continue to be paid quarterly, business as usual for the, the chamber while we do our due diligence and review.
Mr. Crowe, um, I attended the, um, conference out at Odessa College, and I don't recall the gentleman's name that was our presenter. But he mentioned something along the lines of, that he complimented that, uh, that the O D C was, uh, working through the Chamber of Commerce, if I could remember correctly. Are you suggesting that we, um, look at a different type of, uh, partnership with someone else to, to handle this, or, I mean, I'm, I'm, I didn't pick up on what?
Great question, so first of all, let me be clear, you know, no one is saying that the chamber is doing a bad job, okay, at all, Chamber's done a good job. The question is, is there a better, more efficient, cheaper way to do it? We don't know, in twenty-five years, this has never been looked at, so we're doing our due diligence, what we feel that you guys have put us in place to do, which is to evaluate these contracts, evaluate, are we getting the best value for every tax dollar we're spending? You know, we do this with all of the other vendor contracts, you know, we've, we changed advertising mediums from C V A to current media, um, we went in and changed some of the city's contract, we hired an outside legal professional that specializes in economic development, and moved some of that cost over, um, we're looking into some of the accounting stuff, this is just normal what we do with all of our, what we should be doing with all of our vendors, it's just, you know, to me, for some reason, you know, a couple of the contracts the city's had for years have kind of become sacred cows, and they've just, you know, that we just say, let's just keep doing it that way, cause we've always done it that way. Shouldn't we do our due diligence, and shouldn't we go in and evaluate, you know, what's our return on investment, you know, what, what are we spending every year, what have we spent since nineteen ninety-eight? You know, as in economic development, you know, how many million to give away how much million? What, you know, what does it produce for us? What does it produce for us in, in the form of salaries? What does it, you know, produce for us in the form of new jobs? What does it produce for us in the name of capital, taxable capital investment? We have some of those answers, but we don't have all of those answers. You know, and, and how do we track that? You know, to me, the best way to track that is, let's compare it not just to ourselves, because that's kind of what we've done over the past several decades, is we compare how we did this year to last year, to the year before, and to ten years ago. Why don't we compare ourselves to how other economic development centers are doing? You know, what are their matrices? Again, we don't know what we don't know. And that's what we're in the process of now.
Has there been any evaluation in the city's services? You know, we're at two two hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and forty-nine. But since inception, city secretaries ran, posted the agenda, do the minutes, attend the meetings and things of that nature, and then do the minutes. I know there is a fee to it, but the thing is, is it's not very accurate, but it puts a lot of pressure on, on the city. The other one is finance. That's another aspect of, legal is another aspect of it. Either way, we can re-invaluation and see if there's another way we can do it where the city gets pulled back from that?
Absolutely, and, and we've brought that up in the, in the past for consideration. You know, Norma just said that she just enjoys working with her so much, she can't imagine, you know, not doing this. And the same with Seth. No, it, it's a great question, Mayor, it really is, and that's.
I hear the opposite, he goes, oh, my God, it's another ODC meeting. I'm sorry to throw you in the bus.
I think everyone would like to have economic development responsible for economic development. The city has a lot of stuff to worry about.
But it looks like what we're doing is, is just creating a bigger bureaucracy. And that, you know, the, everything you, everything it's done, it's served at the, at the, at the wishes of the council. So all of these agreements are subject, we're, the buck stops up here. So you don't know what you don't know, but I know this, that since inception, there's been sixty million dollars worth of beginning project appraisal values to start with. And now it's up, the appraisal value is up to two hundred and seventy-five million. So I'd say that's a pretty good ROI, based on, based on performance.
Possibly, but what did it cost us to get there?
About what it's costing us every year, about a million dollars, or a little, just now got to a million.
Total cost of so far from my calculations has been about a hundred and forty million since we've started. So again, until you put the numbers to it over a twenty-five year, what, what's the annual return on that? I mean, could we have taken that same hundred and forty million and put it in a certificate of deposit and got a better return? And not had.
No, you couldn't, no, the last twenty years, you'd have gotten one percent.
You don't know that.
I do know that.
Over twenty years, there's no way possible.
Chris, in nineteen eighty-six, interest rates, nineteen eighty-six interest rates were, or nineteen seventy-six, interest rates were twenty-two percent. I didn't think I'd ever see them back down to ten percent. And they've been down at four percent now for twenty years.
You said one.
Well, four, three, whatever, you pick a number, it's low, very low.
So four percent annualized on, on that hundred and forty million would have netted you what?
At one percent, not very much.
No, at four percent.
At what, four percent?
At rule of seventy-two, it doubles every ten years.
Yeah, that's correct, I understand.
Cut it in half, set doubled once. So that's two hundred and eighty million.
But you're not giving any credit, you're not giving any credit back to the, to the projects themselves.
Quick math, so.
Yeah, I understand. But I'm just saying, based on, but you know, you know, you're not pulling back. I just gave you the appraised values. Then you have the jobs, then you have the sales tax, created by the jobs and spending. So you've got all that to go into it. So this is one of the few things that we just don't need. I watched your last two meetings online, and you didn't, when asked, you didn't give one single reason why this needed, first of all, you sort of wanted to go monthly. Then you came back at the next meeting, you wanted to do quarterly. We funded it for a year, and I think part of the board at ODC wanted to, said, if you want to put it out for an RFP, fine. You sprung it on them at the last minute, so I have a problem with that. Put it up for an RFP. But we don't need this problem right now. There's a lot of things at play that don't, that involve you to some degree, but not as much as it is us, the city, and what we're trying to get some things done. And we don't need this kind of controversy going. And I believe we'll have an uproar from the members of the chamber, which are, is our business community, which you're not a part of, I don't think, or Mr. Russell is either one. And so if why that is the case, I don't know. But that's your per, personal choice. But a lot of the people that we're working with right at this very moment, trying to get some things done positive for this community, are all big chamber members. I mean, big ones. And I don't want to upset the apple cart right now, and I'm just being honest with you. I need, we got a project we're trying to get done. We just need to put this on the back burner. And I, I am not in favor of renewing this contract on a quarterly basis. I am, you know, willing to renew it on an annual basis. You want to put an RFP out for next year, knock yourself out.
Don't think that's needed. I think we can gather our information much quicker. And either come back to the chamber and say, you're doing a great job, therefore you have nothing else to worry about, you don't have a year to worry about it.
I don't want to leave the flux, I don't want to have to discuss it.
Or we may have to, have to change. Either way, you put us in a position to do the due diligence, which is what we're doing.
I just want you to do it differently.
Well, the way the contract's written is, is halfway through the year, if we do decide to do a change, we can. We have to wait till next year. So if we do the contract quarterly and we want to make a change, then we can. It gives us the option to do what you have charged us with, which is, again, get the best value out of every tax dollar that you guys are collecting. So.
But this contract, this contract says it will not, not be renewed quarterly beyond twenty twenty-four.
It would be an annual contract anyway.
It doesn't say that in here.
That, that would be, that would be normal, because it'll come up next year, and we can either renew it for a year, or we can do it for another quarter.
But again, back to my original question, you never gave one single reason. So this is your reason for wanting to change?
Absolutely.
Yeah, my suggestion, my suggestion to this council is, we don't need this right now. We don't need to be messing with it on a quarterly, we don't need.
When would you like to do it?
I'd like you to put out an RFP, change this language to a year, put out an RFP, bring it back to council whenever, and for next year, when it comes up for again next August, whenever, and we'll do it then.
We've kicked this can down the road for twenty-five years. I disagree, I don't think we need to do that again.
We're going to disagree on it.
So my, my recommendation is.
We're not kicking it down the road. It just now came, it just came.
We'll continue with our due diligence, and we'll be happy to come back to you guys.
Okay, so, so let, let me ask this question. What, what's the responsibility of the council? The council is, is here to affirm the budget?
You're not going to have to vote on every one of these, because anytime it comes to an expenditure by the corporation, ODC, council is ultimately responsible. Now, you're not going to vote tonight, you'll vote on the twelfth, I think it's three weeks from now.
Okay. An expenditure meaning that, you know.
By it being spent.
Okay.
To, to a contractor in an agreement, you're ultimately responsible for it.
Now, when it comes, when it comes to City of Odessa and all, everybody that hears mentioned to one through six, are these, are these, these are not new contracts? Are they new contracts or they're renewals?
These are renewal. They, they are new contracts awarded every year.
Okay.
And they start on October the first, and they end on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four.
So basically, the council's responsibility is to accept the renewal or to deny the renewal?
They're not, they're not renewed. They're, they're, some, you may think of them as being renewed, but they're not. They're actually awarded every year, like to the Black Chamber, they're awarded, to the Odessa Chamber, they're awarded. And then CBA was not awarded here, year before last. And Media Partners was awarded the contract to do the PR.
And that was, that was, that was, and so this was for last year or this year, on, on the, on the.
Everything, everything is current right now until September thirtieth. But what you have before you starts on October first, twenty twenty-three, and goes all the way to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. I guess, basically, I guess what I'm saying is, it is up to the council to get into the weeds and determine the, the specifics of each and every contract.
Well, ultimately, you're, you're, the council, you have a right to accept the contract as is or vote the contract down and say, no, we're not accepting it quarterly. We would prefer, that's a matter of putting it to a vote. But you won't do that today, you'll do it three weeks from now.
Okay. Okay, so let me, Mr. Rose, anything else?
No, sir.
Can you come up here real quick? I've got some questions. Can you come up here real quick?
Yes, sir.
So real quickly, I've asked this question before. Currently, right now, everybody here, they all receive payments. Can you explain us how, how that's done? Can you walk us through the process?
For the annual?
Well, they're annual contracts, but how are they paid out?
They're all a little bit different. I know that the chamber, let me pull the contract up. The two chambers are quarterly, the Black Chamber and the Chamber of Commerce are quarterly.
So you break up the, the, the fifty thousand in four payments?
Correct.
And then the chamber, in this case, would be one point one, would be in, in.
Yeah, and they would, they get the, their first check on October tenth, and then January tenth, April tenth, and then July tenth.
Every tenth on the, on the quarter?
MoTran. Do you see it? MoTran is quarterly.
Current media? Also?
Current media is by invoice. So whatever, they submit their invoices, it gets approved, and then they get paid out if they're approved.
Okay, as long as it stays within the seven forty-eight.
Correct, they will not get more than that amount. And anything at the end of the fiscal year, whatever, it's not used, has to be returned back to the ODC.
And then UTPB is the same way?
Quarterly, yeah, UTPB is quarterly. Now, the City of Odessa is monthly.
Yeah, we're monthly.
And that's just a, a transfer.
Okay.
Seth, is that the beginning of the month? By the sixteenth of the month.
The point being here that all those contracts are all annual contracts, except for this one. And, and I, I just don't like that change at this moment. Mayor, technically speaking, they're not renewals. They are awarded anew every year. So they're not renewals as, as you would think of the same contract being, you know. And like the chamber, as far as the chamber, I think they were the only RFP that they sent in, right? To, is that the only one that we received from the chamber?
For economic development.
Economic development, yeah, on that particular RFP.
Yeah, all of these companies submitted a proposal. We sent out our requests, and all these companies submitted. These are the only companies that submitted proposals, and the contracts were drawn up based on their proposals and their, their budget.
You send an RFPs for, for all this right here?
Yeah, we, every year.
What process do we use?
Pardon me?
What process do we use?
It's, we send a letter to our existing contractors. This year, we were asked to post it on the website, the city's website, so we did that.
And I believe Monica did that, right?
So anybody who saw it, who, and, and we said what we were looking for, anything to promote economic development. So anyone could have submitted a proposal, no, no one else did other than these, these five. And then the, the city is, we use the same contract every year.
So it's already been done?
For, for this fiscal year.
So let me ask another question. So let me ask this question. What type of reporting is required by everyone here other than City of Odessa?
Activity reporting and financial reporting.
When is that done?
The financial is supposed to be once a month on the two chambers and the city. You. See. So UTPB is also is supposed to send a financial reporting once a month. And. Current media is doesn't, is not required to send us a financial report because they're paid by invoice. So we see that with their invoices. And they're all required to do an activity report, a written activity report once a month, just saying what they did for economic development. And we're doing, this year, the ODC Board asked, instead of everybody doing a verbal report once a month, they, some of them still do it once a month, some of them can do that quarterly. So they still have to submit their report, their, their paper report. If they had something special they wanted to talk about, they, they certainly could come and make a report. But some of the companies are not going to be required to do that monthly.
Okay.
And may, may I add on the city's, I'm sorry, on the city's contract? You had mentioned the legal and the city secretary and finance. It is also the city manager's office and downtown Odessa. Those are also two departments that are included in the city's contract. They provide services as well. And it's basically just the facade and infrastructure grants that they do. And then the city manager has a little, city manager's office has a little. On the exhibit A, it lists each of the city departments. So it's finance managers, attorneys, secretary, and downtown Odessa. So five departments in the city.
Downtown Odessa handles the facade, the facade program, right? They take in the application, things of that nature.
They do that, and then, yeah, they, they also do the payment. So they, once the receipts are brought in, they, they issue those payments once it's approved.
What's the role of the city manager's office and its oversight?
So I've got work with the director, the economic development director, on recruitment and retention of business, provide technical assistance to new businesses wanting to come to the area, guidance for new businesses on other economic incentives like the tax abatements and three eighties, and providing technical assistance for development in, in the city, and then assist as, as needed.
And sign contracts.
Okay.
And sign contracts.
All right, well, I stand corrected. Nope, you can't leave. So, okay, it's all to give questions out.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the RFPs, and this is my recommendation, not only for ODC but the city, because this has just been the way it's been done for decades, is, oh, we'll put a note out on the city's website. If you're a vendor out there, I don't care what kind of vendor you are, unless you're checking the city's website once a quarter, once a month, you're never going to know that the city's looking for anything. So when we put out RFPs, the best thing for us to do, in my opinion, is either by department, by purchasing department, is look and see. If you're going to put this out, whether it be for insurance or new fire trucks or whatever, there are companies out there that specialize in that. I think we should send them an invitation and say, look, this is what we're wanting to do. Here's a breakdown, and actually send out the RFP to them and say, here, here are the guidelines. We would love for you to bid on this. And I know in the past, in some cases, we've done that, but in most cases, like in this, putting it on the city's website just isn't enough. And that's why we're digging deeper to do our due diligence and saying, look, what do we not know? Why is it that so many economic developments across the state do it differently? Is it a different return? Is it less expense? Is it ease of doing business? We don't know. That's the reason for the quarterly contract, is to do the time to figure out, is this what we should do? Should we go ahead and make changes now? Or go ahead and expense another one point two million dollars and kick the can down the road and hope nothing else is going on this time next year that might be inconvenient and we can't do the contract? So, there you go.
Right, thank you. Thank you, yes. Questions, comments? Thank you very much. We're going to move on to item, item eight. Discuss Code Enforcement Role, Responsibilities, and Policy Procedures. Ms. Sandoval?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I kind of wanted, first of all, to give you an overview of how the department works and, and what we do when we receive complaints and how we address the complaints and the violations within the community. This is Oscar Ortega, excuse me, and Paul Vodette of the, I'm losing my voice, I'm sorry. They are our code enforcement training officers. Oscar is providing a map of the city, and it shows how we break up the city between our fourteen officers. We have the different sections, and each officer is assigned to one of those sections to handle the complaints that come into that area. And they also will do field observation. They try to, if they're not swamped with complaints, they will do, if we have a complaint and they're not swamped with like ten others in that they need to get to that day, they will do a survey of that area that they're already in to, to address all the complaints that are in that area. Thank you. That way, we can try to make a comprehensive effort right in that one area. But if they, they have like ten or twenty complaints, they will address that call-in complaint and then go to their next call-in complaint that's in their, their section of town. We, we, like I said, we do field observations. We also get a lot of complaints that are called into our office that are not for things that we address. We get a lot of complaints that come in on an average of up to two hundred a month that we get out there and there's no violation there that we can address. That is where our education program comes into play, is we try to educate the public so they know what are actual violations and what, you know, we cannot address. The, we get a lot of calls on weeds. People don't realize the weeds have to be twelve inches tall before they're an actual violation. We also, when we do have a violation at a. We also, when we do have a violation at a property, we don't just go to that house for that violation one time. We, on an average, probably end up at that property at least four times because we have our initial inspection, a re-inspection. If it's still not cleared on the re-inspection, we then try to make contact with the offender again at, on a, at our third visit, try to talk to them. They give us, say they give us a date, I'll have it done with that. So we go back out and look, it's still not there. So we do our fourth, and at that point, if they have not cleared up, we kind of hit a roadblock because our, our, our two remedies that we have at that point, when we cannot get cooperation, is we can either take and do a summons and summons them to court, or we can do a work order and have street department clean it. Our problem is that both, uh, street department is so far behind, they've got work orders there to be for the properties that we need to clean from last year, over thirty-five that are there for last year, plus they have work orders that we've submitted starting in January to now to try to get properties cleaned. We also will do summonses to court. I'll let the gentleman talk about the issues that we run into when we summon someone to court, because they deal one-on-one with, with the attorneys over there. I do want to say that, uh, one of the solutions that we had previously when we were taking people to court was, um, it was about, it was after the, the drought where we had the drought issues and we were taking tons and tons of people to court, and what would happen would be, you know, we would do, take, say they had seven violations, they'd go to court, they'd pay one, the rest of them would be dismissed. We weren't getting results that we felt like we needed to. I had came to management at that time, and I asked if I could have my own attorney that worked in our office, that was assigned directly to code enforcement and community development. I was going to ask for that. I was told it was best to let the legal department do that. So the legal department did that at, at that time. The city attorney at that time submitted a, a request for an additional attorney in the office. That attorney was hired, that position was given, that attorney was hired and, at that time, office right in our department. We had an attorney right there in an office that when we ran into an issue with, you know, conflict on how the, the ordinance read and how that we were being interpreted, that could give us legal advice at that time and help us move through that. The attorney also made sure that all of the summonses for all the PCs we did, they made sure the summons were sent out. We had a day, I think it was every other Wednesday, we were on the judge's calendar for all code enforcement, strictly code enforcement. The attorney would go to, go to the judge, go into court, you know, do the prosecution, whatever happened, uh, she oversaw what happened there. If they didn't show, then she, she did a failure to appear warrant. She saw that all of that was done. So we had a way to move things through. I think it was earlier this month, we, they came across us a probable cause statement over in the prosecutor's office that was dated twenty, twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
Had not been prosecuted. It was, you know, it was there. I know there were some issues about whether, how to prosecute that, but that, that PC had just been passed from person to person, and it's still sitting, you know, it's still there. The other solution, you know, as far as street, they're so, you know, they're so far down on, on personnel, they're so short, short on personnel, they don't have time to go out and clean our lots. You know, they work them in when we get multiple complaints about a lot, you know, we get, so we, we work them in, or they will work them in for us, but there's a lot of work orders over there for properties that need to be cleaned. I'm not, you know, I'm not blaming anybody, it's just the facts of how, you know, kind of where we're stuck in trying to get things cleaned up.
Okay. Counsel, do we, I want to, I know everybody has an issue. The reason why I place this, Marita, why, the reason why I place this on, on the agenda is, I've explained to counsel that I am the person that moved code enforcement out of OFR to where it's at now today. I'm the guy.
Yes, sir.
And I want to say why. At that time, Mary Dominguez and was the, the director of code enforcement, okay? And one of her biggest complaints is that, you know, we had, City BG was a wide area, and we had code enforcement that worked in and out of the designated area, and it was hard for them to track the time that was spent because they were supplementing the payroll and the time that they spent, equipment, things of that nature. But it had no controls, all under OFR. So her and her staff was very adamant about wanting this changed, placed it on the agenda, we discussed it, counsel went ahead and moved it, and this is what exists today. Now, some of your personnel at that time, then and today, have personally complained to me, uh, basically is they hated the move because they took away authority that they had under OFR. I don't know exactly what that meant. I know it may probably mean something to you, but I know, you know, you know, basically they told me they, they didn't like the move then, and in the course where I was on the council, they knew I was responsible, they continued to make their opinions known to me about how much they hated that move and blamed me personally. And I said, yeah, I'm responsible, but I did it at the request of the staff. So as I, as listening to the issues they're going through, again, the one thing can assess, everybody has issues, but how do we start fixing it? How do we address it? Simply doing nothing is not going to work. We're looking for solutions because.
I think this is the number one thing that we all get.
Right.
And, and, and you hear it too.
And we, yeah, we hear it all the time.
And, and so, but, you know, and we're not looking to pump fingers. We didn't bring you up here to, to roast you. We need to get together because I, I, I know that's the sentiment, and it doesn't matter what anybody says, this is the sentiment, that we're here to pick on this department. I know personally that your department and your department people have been saying, saying that I hate, I hate the department. I've heard a lot of back and forth, and I don't want to get into that. I don't care what anybody's saying. I know that everybody on the council, everyone on the council has come to me and says, we have issues, we want to address them. I said, okay, let's get together, and instead of being, uh, butting heads, because what you're basically, what we're, what we're realizing, we understand there's issues, and all we want to be able to do is get together and we want to help you.
Right.
We want to help you, we want to enforce you. What are the solutions? We understand that, you know, everybody's doing a great job, you're trying to do your best, but the thing is, is that the common citizen out there, you know, they're literally watching the weeds grow, and they don't care about all those little issues. It, it doesn't matter to them, and they don't want to hear it, they just say, they want that cleaned. They want their city to be cleaner, and, and we have to find a way to deliver that. We have to jump, jump to hoops, you have to jump to a lot of hoops, and what we want to do is we want to mitigate that. So I guess, you know, we all have what we're dealing with, and open it up for a discussion, but let's keep in mind that we are looking for solutions. We're here together, we're here together as a team, it's about teamwork, and we're not here to bash you, we're not here to judge you, we're not here to criticize you. What I'm asking, Marita, is help us to help you, how we, the council, can interject and make your life and your staff and your daily a lot easier and a lot better to achieve the goals that you're after. Is that fair enough?
Right, yeah, and I agree. I mean, we're all here to work together and make, I mean, Odessa's our home.
Yeah.
You know, I've been here since eighty-eight.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, it's been my home. It's the longest I've ever lived anywhere in my, you know, entire adult life.
You'll, you'll, you'll be taken out here kicking the screen.
But, you know, I guess, I think some of the ordinances need to be looked at.
Okay.
I think that's one of the things we need to look at as how, you know, how can they be adjusted to give us some more authority, maybe, I guess for a better lack of words, some more.
Or ordinances in what area?
Well, I can tell you one, it's time, timeframes, because what I've, what I've asked you about, you know, are the Dollar Generals and Family Dollars, and that one on East Ridge, plastic bottles keep piling up in the same place.
Yeah.
Since I've mentioned that to you because we had a complaint.
And we keep going, yeah.
And so, it, you told me the timeframe's sixty days to do this, next planting season to do this.
Is that ordinance?
That ordinance, the landscape ordinance. I was floored.
But it's not only landscape, it's, it's, their sign is, like on East Ridge, that Dollar, uh, Dollar General sign blew out, it's laying on the ground with a big rock on top of it, and then all these plastic bottles.
It's secured.
Yeah, and so somebody needs to go by there and say, clean that up, that somehow. We don't need to wait sixty days and then the first.
Is it in the parking lot?
No, that's right out, it's right in front of the store, it's on the highway, right on East Ridge. Can't miss it.
Oh, on East Ridge? Oh, we've been on, I've been looking at the one on Fodry, so we need to get to East Ridge.
Well, Fodry's just around the corner.
Yes.
There's two of them very close together.
Okay, okay.
But I'm just, I'm just saying, I go by it every day. It just gets worse and worse.
We.
So we just got to figure that out.
Right.
We have a, we have a business running right over here in my subdivision, over here off of Sixth Street.
On Graham?
And Graham.
No.
That.
He is in deferred adjudication right now. We, we did get him into court. He's on deferred adjudication.
It's still piling up, and he's still running his business out of there.
I've told we have to wait and that till the adjudication period is over before we can move and do anything else.
So that's another ordinance thing.
Is that an ordinance or is that?
Uh, that's, that was legal, that was legal's direction to us, the prosecutor.
We don't give them that option, yeah.
But that gentleman is moving his stuff out. He's supposed to be out of there by the middle of September. He's bought, he's apparently bought some property in, uh, out, out of the city limits.
Well, I hope so, because right now is, we got an environmental problem because there's oil all over the street, there's oil all over that yard, and if he moves and doesn't clean that up, that's going to get in our water table.
Right.
It's going to get all through here, so what, do we have environmental to go by?
Yeah, we have, we can have stormwater go by.
That's been a problem, stormwater, I think.
It has?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So how many ordinance are we looking at? Do you have a list of them that you can bring to us so that we can get on this? Because, I mean, all of our districts and being at the large, we're, all of us are getting hounded on how bad our city looks. I mean, even driving down Grandview and lots that the city don't own, other residents don't know that the city doesn't own those lots. And I'm thinking Boulder and Grandview and Maple and Grandview, and the weeds, they're maybe not at twelve inches, but there's so visibility that it's a problem. And so, I mean, would it be another option to go back to where the, I'm putting this on Chief Gotten, maybe we go back to the fire department? Would it be more helpful if, if you had their crews helping you? You say you're short-staffed, I mean, help us find a solution for that? Does it need to go, do we need to undo what Mayor Hovin's done and go back to the fire department being in charge?
They, I mean, the ordinances are the ordinances, whether the fire department's enforcing them, they're under fire department to enforce them or they're to enforce them with us. What I understood when all of that happened was they were scattered, there were some in planning and zoning and some in the fire department, and they, because I had just started working there at that, that time, I hadn't been there very long.
Marita, correct me if I'm wrong, though, but what happens once you have a case? You send it to municipal court, correct?
Yes, sir.
Municipal court, the judges, if there is a guilty plea, then the prosecutors never hear about it. If there's a not guilty, then it gets punted to us, and, and that's how, so we have no idea really what's going on until we're told, hey, you need to prosecute this case.
Well, I think they take them to, they take them to the prosecutor, the PCs go to the prosecutors. Now, the citations, what has been happening with that, with the citations, the person will go in and pay the citation and walk away.
Yeah. And then, and then there's, yeah, and then, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that we're, that we're discovering with the judges, that they pay in it, but yet at the same time, the grass is still there, the weeds are still there.
I don't even know that they see the judge, I think they just go to the window and pay.
They just go to the window and pay it, and that's what, that's what we're hearing.
Yeah. They, you know, they go to the window and pay. The PCs, I think, I don't even know if summonses have been sent out on any of our PCs, because we're not, we're, that's another issue. Unless we go, and the officer goes and checks on them.
Right.
We don't know where that, that, you know, that summons is.
Public citation, that's what a PC is, public citation?
No, PC is a probable cause statement.
Probable cause, yeah.
So, sorry.
No, no, you're fine, you're talking industry terms, I get it.
The, the probable cause is a statement from the officer saying, you know, this is what happened, I've done this, and I've done this and this, and this is the violation, and it continues, and I've been here, and I've been there, here are the pictures, you know, we need to bring them to court.
How much are those fines typically?
I think a hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Okay, that's probably, that's part of the problem, if it's not really hurting their pocketbook, where they could just pay it and keep it on, it's a bad business.
Nara, hop up, come up here. You're the one that went over and nosed around for them, come on.
Pay the fine and then.
Come on.
Exactly, just make it where it hurts.
Mayor, we're about to get to the, from the horse's mouth here. See, she went and investigated.
Did he just call you a horse?
I used to do that. In the past, I would receive the probable causes affidavits before I turned a man to municipal court where summons to be issued. I contacted every single citizen. If they could not yet, they were elderly, I contacted nonprofits, or if it was, so by the time that they came out for summons, there was no summons because all the cases had been resolved and they had been cleared, correct?
In, in most cases, yes.
And so now, those, with, with current administration, I don't know when it changed, all probable cause affidavits are going straight to municipal court.
Yeah, they're not coming to us.
The office are only touching those that are, where the defendant enters a plea of guilty or not guilty. I do not know if the judges are setting, you know, setting up a special docket. They were at the beginning when I was handling them, they, I don't know what they are doing, sir. I don't know if the municipal court administrator is, if there's some kind of standing order that they cannot pay at the window. We did, I don't know what, so it would be probably a good idea that those two department heads, our presiding judge or municipal court administrator be contacted, but I do know that the prosecutor's office is not receiving, and those probable, they're directly filed in municipal court.
Actually, that's incorrect.
Okay.
So if it's, if it's a citation and the person signs the citation, that goes straight to municipal court.
So we're not seeing it.
I mean, yeah, if it's a probable cause, we've been instructed, that has to go to legal first, that that cannot go to municipal court, because it, it must be approved by one of the attorneys before it's forwarded to them for summons.
And, and the instructions, they're going to legal, it's standing from the previous administrations, we're still following that policy?
Yes.
Is that written policy?
So I don't know what they're doing, because.
Well, we'll get to the bottom of it.
I mean, they, they take it to, it was Addison, I think was the last one, and I, there's another gentleman there that they had, they, you just take.
Okay, so let me answer this question, so do you no longer have legal person in the office?
No.
Okay, so that was, that was taken away?
That was, that lasted about a year, maybe a little over a year, and they decided they had.
Was it working?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I was at municipal.
Oh, you weren't, you weren't there anymore?
I was, I was not, I was at.
So basically, in the end, you know, you were, you, when you were there, you were working as a liaison, as you got these, you were, you were working.
Right, and I was in constant communication with Marita's staff.
And then you wind up transferring out, then I guess the solution came in to bringing in a, an attorney that was working.
No, she was there while the attorney was there.
Oh, you were there with the attorney?
Yeah, she worked with the attorney.
Yeah, but Vanessa was being housed at community development.
She was right there in our office, anything we had, we could write to her, she'd help us work through it, you know, it was great. But about, like I said, about a year, they decided, well, I think when Larry Long retired, our, the, the city attorney that was in place at that time, when he retired and the new city attorney came in, or the, the interim, when interim came in, she was, yeah, she was pulled away from us.
Not go down those rabbit holes. Yeah, we all know what happened there, so we don't want to go none of down those three rabbit holes there.
Well, Mayor, it looks like to me what we need to do is get legal to get the ordinances out, and let's, let's look at them, because, you know, the sixty days, the sixty days for Family Dollars way up, and still nothing's happening.
One of the things is, we have ordinance issues.
I know.
Everywhere across the board.
Yeah, I just want to say.
And so, and, and we're trying to resolve it in one department by limiting three positions and hiring them, but we're not, we don't, we're not even going to get traction till after October one. So is it a possibility for us to go back and, you know, look at, look at a legal person, or look at a liaison within that department, see if that's worth? Because let me tell you, the thing is, aside from the ordinances, we have to be able to, you know, if the system worked before, because it's not working now, and, and, and all, and the process that we're doing, you know, it's the same thing, and we're expecting different results. If the street department's having issues, and we're not going to fix them tomorrow, we have to find a solution. I think it's worth looking into, working together, going down those, talk, yeah, talk to legal, talk to municipal court, talk to the administrator down there. The option to look in the liaison, I, I'm not saying that those are all the answers, but we've got to do something. Because, you know, this is one thing that we spend a lot of time on, we go down, you know, I know several of us here are always on social media, we're not commenting, but we are looking, and we're seeing all those comments.
I mean, they call us with their comments, I mean. You know, they, they, I mean, they.
Hey, I had my neighbor, when I had my ATV parked in, on my curb, she called, you know, she, we had an agreement where I had it. And one day she decided she didn't want it, so she called code enforcement, and came over and wanted me to fix it because the citation was hers. And I liked it, I said, you called the city, he goes, oh, no, they just came over, like, no, you called the city, and so, I moved it, and so, I moved it with, I said, all you had to do is come and ask me. But, you know, the thing is, is that we deal with this all the time, all the time, and I know you do too. And so, we, we, we need to, well, let's get together, God, we're not going to form another committee, but we are going to have another meeting, and, you know.
I, I have a thought.
Okay.
Um, would it, what would the, the thought be that maybe we could hire, kind of like we used to do when we had the vacant lot mowing program, maybe we could hire a contractor to go in and mow those lots that we have, that we're having issues getting out, that's having streets so far backed up, that would take some of them.
We used to fund it through CDVG, and so, that went away.
Right.
And we just stopped funding it through CDVG.
Right.
How would we go through the process?
Well, we've already allocated all of our funding, but I've got two projects, or two, yeah, two pots of money that are CDVG money, that I'm not going to ask to roll, so I want to have some money there for reallocation. So maybe we could come back with a reallocation for those funds after the first of the year, and allocate those for a contractor to actually go in and do some, some mowing.
I don't remember, we used to have what, twenty, thirty thousand in that, or it was less than that annually, it wasn't a lot.
It was like fifteen, I think, is what we used to do.
It wasn't a whole bunch, but, you know.
I think it's what we used to do.
Dollar was worth more then than those days it is now.
Yeah, but I mean, that, we also have our lawn mowing program, so when they find somebody who's elderly, we try to put that person on our lawn mowing program to take care of that, that property out of the, you know, the constant violations for weeds and all. So, we've got like sixty households on that, so.
Well, I would say, if you, when you're ready, go ahead and put it on the, on the work session, and we'll look at it, and we'll go from there. And then, and then research the other, the other, you have the liaison, we have to go back with an attorney, you know, so we can get.
Yeah, I think maybe if we just had an attorney that was assigned to our department, not even me.
You know, those attorneys, it costs a lot of money.
What about, what about a paralegal, Dan?
Uh, yeah, what about a paralegal?
What about a paralegal?
Yeah, I mean, maybe not even in our office, but somebody that we, we had a direct line to.
Yeah.
We know how to research it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get you.
I like that, definitely.
Mayor.
All right.
Mayor, if I may have a minute or two, it may be from just fresh eyes coming in, that putting people at it, I don't believe right now is the right way to go. I heard three different ways that these PCs got handled, and they didn't agree with each other. And we've really got to nail things like that down, and we keep putting people in there, it's still not efficient.
Yeah.
Your idea about looking at the ordinances and looking at what's going on, that's the key, I'm not trying to not help, obviously. But let's not attack it from the wrong direction first, just a suggestion.
No, I like that, I mean, the thing is, we have to address our ordinances all across the board, you know, we're having issues, you know, with our housing, things of that nature. You know, it comes up again, so, well, let's start there, you know, who, I think you don't have enough on your plate, Dan, so. You're going to start pointing fingers, you know who's going to get it.
Volant home.
Well, it is, it is a big task, but I think if, if it's broken up by department, and each department head kind of takes, takes control of that, and pulls the ordinances that need to be looked at, and I think it makes it a bit easier to, to handle.
I mean, I, I knew there, when we had the, the vacant lot program, you know, we always put money into it, it was addressed, and it, it didn't take away from our city departments. I knew it went away, I didn't, you know, I just never really looked at why, but I knew.
It was taken, I guess it went away, and it, we just relied on the street department to handle it.
Yeah, okay.
I'm more than, more than happy always to help.
Oh, you, 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 you come up with an idea, it's your, you, you research it and follow it all the way through.
There you go, John.
This list has got a lot of words.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
John is now in charge of the ordinances.
That's right. You got a lot, you got, you got a lot of reading material that's going to put you to sleep or not. Oh, yeah, we can get those, yeah, we can, we can back up the truck real quick. All right, I, thank you very much, appreciate you.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and move on, and try to wrap this up, our funds, you got a proposal, we're not going to go through them today.
Yeah, I would just say, if, it's pretty long, so I have some of the department heads here to speak on their hours, so if we could table this one in the next week.
Yeah, basically, what we'll wind up doing, guys, we, we got the list, we got them, and what we will do is, we'll, on the next work session, we'll, we'll put it up there and we'll start going through each one. So let us take a look at it, and we'll go from there.
That sounds great.
That way we can get, we can solidify and, and commit those funds.
Do it all at once, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah.
Table number nine, sir? Table number nine?
No, well, we don't need to table, just a discussion, we don't need to, we don't need to take that kind of action, uh, the ARPA funds.
Yes, I, I would recommend we table that too, just to discuss over it, I've got a presentation, and it's not as long as ARPA, but it, about twenty minutes, probably.
Okay, and we'll put that on the next one. Okay, discuss council work sessions and council meetings. So, a suggestion is that we had decided, I guess my question's here, is real quick, I put this item on the agenda because I wanted to discuss our council sessions. I know that some are going to get lengthy in our work sessions, and I wanted to see if we could move up to two o'clock?
No.
And if we finish up, we have a little longer break in between, if we need to go home and things of that nature, instead of trying to rush back in one hour. We can remain that fluid, but, you know, it, it's just a suggestion. Not that we have to make any agreement today, just a thought process about moving to, but also, what I really wanted to talk about is, and, and I said that I was going to bring this back up again, traditionally, we've always had work sessions, well, it's evolved, it used to be the finance committee, and it evolved to what it is now. And so, we were having meetings every week, which was draining, now, this has really helped staff, I think everybody's gotten used to it. Here comes the other kicker, do it in the morning. I know people say, oh my God, you know, you do that, less people are going to come. When they have an item on the agenda, they're going to be here, and so, I want the council to think about doing, you know, in December, we have one meeting, and we have to take council action in order to just do, you know, one meeting. One work session, one meeting because of the holidays. But at one point, let's think about how we can wind up doing a work session and a council meeting in the morning. I always suggested a hybrid, you know, one in the evening and one in the morning, first Tuesday or last Tuesday. Many communities do it in the morning, the county does it in the morning, Midland does it in the morning. Let me tell you, when they have Hot Topic, everybody shows up, we've been there, we've all been there, they're full. We do it in the evening, hospital does it in the evening, school board does it in the evening. And so, it's a thought process I wanted to bring up, because of open meetings, you know, I wanted to bring up in a work session to be able to talk about it. Make some suggestions and throw it out around, look at November, doing something like that in the, in the morning. And the reason why is that, one, we have security, and we, sometimes we ask for two, and we pay the overtime. I know Stuart out there, and he's paying, now he's not paying attention, but he says, it's the easiest overtime I can get. Not that this is a budget breaker, but, you know, the thing is, it's within the daytime, it's within, within the rotation. Or, you know, they still might put somebody in there, but that, that's not the biggest concern. In the staff, this is a normal portion of their day, you know, I know some of us don't like early mornings, nobody wants to be up here in a work session at eight o'clock in the morning. You know, Midland does that.
I'd love that, actually.
I would too, I would love it in the morning, and I get it out of the way, and, and you don't have to plan around it, but that's just me. But it's a thought process, I want everybody to try to consider it, because it, it frees up the whole day. You know, and, and if we go a little long, it's still within normal working hours. Is it drastic? Yeah, we are going to have our complaint, complaint in the naysir, because this is not the way it was always done, but there's a recurring theme. We do think it's just the way it's always been done. It's not limiting anybody from being able to come, if you have an item on the agenda that's pertinent to you, you're going to make time to come in, you know. And so, let me tell you, how many times, we all joke around, hey, when we, when those, those seats are full, what do we always say, are we giving money away? Because this is the only time when it gets full, predominantly that, or we're stirring the pot. And so, something to think about, okay? You know, think about it, I'm going to throw out some suggestions on some dates for y'all to look at and see. I just say, let's just, let's just do one, you know, let's just, let's just throw it out there and see how it goes and works, and see if everybody likes it. And we'll go from there, not, I know Mr. Hing is saying no, so, but.
You know, if you're going to pay me a full salary, then I'll work here twenty-four hours, seven days a week. If you're only going to pay me ten bucks, I have a regular job, I have to pay, I have to feed my family. So, to me, anything after five o'clock, I'm free.
Okay.
Anything before that, I'm not.
All right.
But, I went to my, the people I work for, twice a month, they don't mind, four times a month, they're going to mind.
Oh, no, we're not doing four, we're not going to four, four, four meetings a month.
But, in the mornings, I have stuff that goes on in the mornings.
Okay.
And so, I, you know, I'm responsible for six hundred thousand dollars worth of tanks, being in and out, and stuff's moving in the mornings. There's no time for me to be here.
All right, I understand.
In the mornings.
But no, no one said about going to four meetings, we, we eliminated that, because that was a burden. I mean, we were here every Tuesday, and it was a burden on top of everything else we got.
I am seeing a little problem between the three and the six though, like the three needs to go to the two.
Well, I would, I would ask the council, like, today, we had, you know, long sessions, it would have been gone, a little gone to two. You know, and the work sessions are not mandatory, what the mandatory meetings are, the councils. The work sessions is just something that you can get a little more extra talk about it for the following, you know, two weeks. And so, I know that it's been made a deal, oh, you missed a work session, well, you know, those are optional, yeah, and so, there is no mandatory attendance to the work session, and only to the council meeting, that's all it applies to. And so, but, no, I mean, I, I, this is why we want to have that discussion, but no way are we going back to four meetings. I think the scope that we have it here.
One thing is, I mean, you can limit these discussions, you can, you can time them, I mean, we may have to just go back to a timing thing too. You know, but there is times when we've sat right here, and ten minutes later, we're getting up and going, we're done.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
To me, this is overloading right here, especially with the, with the ARPA deal, that was a long, that was going to be long.
We, 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 we wind up holding a lot of these back, and we have been pushing and pushing them back, and finally got to a point where we had to have them. And, and, because we had pushed the ARPA back quite, quite a bit, a whole bunch, and then the timing of the, the corporations, it just winds up doing that, and, but we, we really do try to, to limit it, try not to have it that long that we can get out of here, we're running thirty minutes late. On item twelve, real quick, on the IT, I think it, staff suggested it, that we wind up having a, an IT always at council work session, ODC. So, Mr. Flores, you have a suggestion, how are you going to handle that for us?
We've already started, so right now, you have an IT staff, yeah, so it's, it's, we're already, once he emailed me, I just talked to the staff, and Landon, that was actually excited, kind of enjoyed it, thought that, well, Tagger it, and you're excited about it.
But he's doing, he's getting into three-day weekends, which he's getting, yeah, that's what it is, that's what it is.
So it's just a matter of us figuring it out now, I mean, at first, probably going to be a little shaky, but we'll figure it out, and it'll get better and better.
Well, this, this allows us to be able to have, we have technical issues, we have IT, and we're not having staff, everybody's trying to figure out, who, who in the staff is more savvy in IT to try, usually gets volunteer to do it. And so, we just went and informed council that we're going, there's going to be an ongoing staple, is that we're always going to have IT in the house while we're winding up any meetings, in case we have those issues.
And that's, so we'll have Landon and Ray figure it out, and then we'll train a, a couple other people so we can, so we can have rotating staff. But Ray and Landon will figure it out, and then they'll train everybody else, essentially.
That's awesome, I appreciate it, we're going to go ahead and wrap it up. Seeing that there is no more business before this council and this work session, I have a motion to adjourn by council member.
So may.
Second by council member.
I second.
All in favor indicating by saying no.
Aye.
Opposing indicating by saying no. Motion passed unanimously, we are adjourned, we'll see you in thirty-five minutes.